All right, we have returned to open session. All right, at this time, at this time, is there any public comment?
I gave you those two.
Oh, we have some, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Okay, yes, we have Glenn Klecker of Hollywood.
Glenn Klecker, 3640 McCormick, Hollywood, Illinois. I think I sent a text message or an email and Kathy forwarded to the board members. I didn't know the procedure for it, but I went to the Hollywood Community House on Saturday, and it was also the day of the science fair at Hollywood. And when I looked out the window at what was supposed to be grass, it's a mud pit. So if we're going to put grass in, either they used the wrong seed. I know the architect said that there are different types and all that. We got the wrong one in there because it's only like half grass and the rest is just mud. The only sports you could have there would be mud wrestling or making mud pies. So I think it has to be addressed what the maintenance is for, how often it should be checked, because on my way here tonight, I took pictures and it's exactly the same way. Sidewalk is covered with mulch by the swings. It's about a foot and a half deep hole with just mud at the bottom. The little merry-go-round that goes around, we have to run around to get the kids getting a ride on there, that's more down to bare mud, too. So either somebody is not raking the shredded material that should be the safety feature for if a kid falls, it's down to bare ground. So I think we got to have someone put it under schedule so that they're checking it and maintaining it and clearing the sidewalk, because if you walk in the sidewalk, you're walking on pieces of mulch rather than a bare sidewalk. Just wanted to bring it to the board's attention. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there any additional public comment?
There's none.
Yeah, all right. If not, we will move on to, are there any proposed changes to the agenda?
No.
All right then, that takes us to the superintendent's report.
Thanks, Dan. We're going to start with our student presenter, so I have April May here, the principal at Hauser, who's going to introduce, I think, a few other adults and the students, too.
Hi, welcome tonight to Hauser. We are very excited to have some students here to share with you and a couple of supervisors, coaches. Our Special Olympics started eight years ago. We're in our eighth year of being a Special Olympic school and team, and we're very lucky to have Coach Stabe and Coach Brown lead us in that. So I'm going to let them go ahead and share a little bit about Special Olympics, and then, most importantly, we have Special Olympic athletes and mentors here to really tell you what it's like.
Hauser Junior High School Special Olympics started in 2015 with two athletes and two mentors. We started with only completing, competing in track and field. Our mission was to expand inclusiveness at Hauser through athletes. Since 2015, we have grown to include anywhere from five to 10 athletes between the grades of fourth to eighth, while averaging 30 eighth-grade general education mentors. Now that we have expanded our team, we have also expanded our events. We compete in bowling, basketball, track, and field while hoping to compete in volleyball and baccio ball next school year.
Hauser's unified Olympics team, meaning our athletes and mentors, compete alongside each other for competitive events. As a mentor, we are very dedicated to support the athletic needs of our athletes as well as representing Hauser. Mentors have had opportunities to expand their leadership skills with the guidance of our coaches and attending a leadership conference.
Mentors are nominated by teacher recommendations. We need to display leadership qualities in and outside of the classroom. We have a positive mindset, dedication to inclusion, and follow the Hauser way.
Throughout the years of our dedicated team, we have achieved several gold medals as mentors and athletes in the Special Olympics team, which has allowed Hauser to attend the state track meet at Illinois State University. At the state meet, our athletes also have won many gold medals in running as well as field events, which is included by me.
Outside of our athletic competitions, we also lead the school in various inclusive activities such as the Polar Plunge, Respect Week, Whole School Clapout, and an inclusive basketball game during the school day. These activities allow our whole school population to see what it means to be inclusive. It also provides opportunities for sixth and seventh graders to see what it means to be a mentor.
One of these activities is Respect Week. Each year, schools across Illinois celebrate Respect Week. The celebration is diverted from Spread the Word campaign that originally worked to promote the end of derogatory terms to describe people with disabilities. This campaign now focuses on inclusion for people with disabilities. At Hauser, we celebrate respect for all, no matter the gender, disability, or race.
One of our newest activities is an in-school basketball game. We have worked hard in practice to prepare for a game against Brook Park Middle School. Fans rotated into the gym every quarter, which gave everyone a chance to catch a glimpse of our team. In the end, we won 90 to 86. This was our first game since COVID. We were able to compete in front of our Hauser classmates. Now, some of our mentors and athletes would like to share one thing we have learned or experienced over the course of this year.
All right, so thank you. So the things I liked about the Special Olympics, in my experience, is gaining the opportunity to play sports, to meet new people, because not only does, not only do you get to play sports, but also meet people by experiencing and joining and joining the people that you meet and get to know, too, and just compete in sports games, of giving your best shot, you know, take a risk, you know? To me, I like challenges and risks, so, which becomes more fun, because I do like challenges, so, so like, but to give me all motivation are the people I meet with, and that's what gets me all motivated, the teachers, my friends, everybody. So that's what I like about Special Olympics. Thank you.
One of my favorite memories of Special Olympics is when we had our away basketball game, and we got to get ice cream, and it was like super fun, so you'd all sit together, and it was just really fun, and I'll always remember that.
What I enjoy in Special Olympics is the interaction and making new friends.
I remember during our, like, Respect Week, I remember everyone was dressing up for the Spirit Week, and it was just really a nice way to notice like all the inclusivity in our school.
I got to meet a lot of new people and athletes, and I just like playing sports with them and just practicing all the sports.
I liked when we had our bowling practices, because we all got to go to like a bowling alley, and we just had to have fun and like bowl with each other. And I think, did we get pizza? We got pizza, and the pizza was really good pizza.
Now, we would like to show some pictures from Special Olympics.
We don't use the remote too often, sorry. This is our unified track team from last year. They ended up winning the gold medal in various events like shot put, long jump, 100 meter, 400 meter. They were very exciting, also very cool. Our unified basketball game, this is from this season. A lot of players made signs to help our team out, cheer us on. Our friend Evan down there was our scorekeeper for some of our practices, which she had a blast doing for us, although I think he changed the score a couple times too many. I think overall, everyone really enjoyed the basketball season, right?
Ah, yes.
This was our Respect Week banner, that at the end of Respect Week, we had the entire Hauser community sign, all the students signed it to say that we know we'll continue going forward, respecting everyone, doing our best to include everyone in all of our different aspects in school and in our community as well. The kids seemed to have a really good time signing that banner and finding a good spot to put their name on it, which is great. There's a video down there, too. This was a clapout that we did going to tackle last year. The entire Hollywood community came out lined up all around the area, cheering us on, as we were leading the whole team. We ended up winning the medal on the way back. So really, thank our athletes to get that, to be a student of that, to have a whole school. They were lined up all the way outside, leading us to the bus, too. It was, it was really great. This is our Polar Plunge. That is me sitting up there with one of our students dunking me several times this year. It was very cool. We do get a lot of, we get great turnout from our staff that really support the Special Olympics and the Polar Plunge there, that, you know, a lot of people take the risk of doing it for the first time, and they're really nervous jumping in, and obviously maybe did the dunk tank the first time this year. Pretty nerve-wracking, right?
I prefer the lake.
It's hard sitting there waiting for them to hit the button, you know, did it hit? I don't want to look, and then you just kind of fall into a ice bath, so that's a lot of fun. We do raise a lot of money, and we are what, three-time Cool School Challenge winners, which means our school raised the most money in our region. This is our track and field state finals with one of our athletes right here, Isaiah, who won the gold medal along with Louis. You won a softball toss, right, or was it running?
Both of them.
Both? Oh my gosh, how could I underestimate you like that? I'm sorry. I think we do have a little video as well of Isaiah running, correct?
Yeah, Isaiah!
I mean, he blew him out of the water. Keep it, keep it, keep it, sir. Nice job, Isaiah.
Yeah, Isaiah!
Here's a couple pictures from our bowling. This is last year's bowling. Unfortunately, our bowling competition this year had to get canceled due to various teams catching COVID, and we were the only ones that would have went there, and there's like, we were going to try to reschedule, and unfortunately, this wasn't able to happen. But last year, Hauser did win another gold medal, and gold and silver. We took gold and silver in the bowling competition last year for our unified Special Olympics, which is really cool. Oh yeah, that is Tony. Yeah, I didn't do it on that. I couldn't tell. I might have just do it with a mask on. But I think that's it, so I appreciate you guys letting us come up here. If anyone has any questions, please feel free, otherwise, we just appreciate you guys listening and hearing about what we do. We truly do love working as Special Olympics coaches here, and just, we're always trying to add new things every year to what we can compete in.
How much time or training do you put in for, training for your events?
We have practice every Tuesday, right, guys?
Oh, yeah.
Every Tuesday after school?
Yes, every Tuesday.
And we just change it up every once in a while during basketball season. Usually, we're doing basketball every single Tuesday, getting prepared for that. We recently just started getting times for our 100-meter races and our long jump competition for the unified track and field that's coming up in May. So yeah, about every Tuesday for an hour after school.
And then our track meets are held usually on a Saturday or Sunday, which are full-day events. And then, if any of our athletes win first place in any event, they automatically go to state, which is held in June, so after school's been let out, and that's held at Illinois State University.
We hope we can return this year.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
From the athletes, what's the favorite event out there of everything?
Favorite event? We were asked what your favorite event is.
My favorite event was the bowling. It was fun.
Isaiah, your favorite event?
My favorite event was becoming memorable after winning it in Illinois State.
Whoa!
Thanks so much for coming. Thanks, Mr. Brown. Great to see you all. Yeah, you don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting. Put your welfare to it, of course.
This is kind of the climax.
I'll just continue off with a few other items. So I've shared for, in the board packet, a PowerPoint presentation from our Living the Plan session. Our Living the Plan is work that we do specific to our strategic plan and our, making sure our work is ongoing and that it is indeed integrated into the work of the district. So shared that with all of you, and actually, as a preview, I think what we'd like to do is bring what we call our elevator speeches, so everyone was challenged to create kind of a short, succinct, if you were to provide somebody a quick overview, if you were riding up a elevator, kind of an overview of what's going on in the different goal areas. So I think that might be worth sharing at the April COW meeting and diving in a little more deeply there. The other thing, we spent a lot of time, was really talking about our identified core values that are part of our strategic plan, really looking at our mission, vision, and values, and had some really candid conversations, too, about how we are in terms of our living our values. And, you know, the principals really appreciated that conversation and are going to take that back to kind of do a values-related conversation with their staff at an upcoming after-school professional development. So I don't know if there's questions about it. I think, again, we'll, we'll share more at the April meeting, but if there were questions, we could certainly answer those. Who, what was the target audience for this one? This is what we call our, our action team leaders. So it's the district leadership team, and then there's a number of teachers that also support action teams specifically, some of our instructional coaches, our EL, teacher coordinator. So not all the people on all the committees, but like the leaders? The leaders of all the committees, right. Because I remember this was like the train the trainer type thing. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and it's been nice. So this is the second time this year that we got together as a full group. You know, some of the goal is to make sure that we're not operating in silos. There is some overlap, especially some of the goals are emerging toward more completion. I shouldn't say completion, but there's really opportunities where Hauser, some of them, directly link together. I also always like to thank Pam Shaw and Nora Garrity also this year for our Behavior Intervention Committee meeting and carefully reviewing behavior intervention policies the district has. Sherry Kleiber sits on that committee and has for several years, so always thanks to Sherry on that, and probably will need to replace with a different board member for the coming year. So again, I think it's really important to note that we take the time to do this, it's a requirement, but I know the team is really thoughtful in considering that we are applying positive behavioral approaches and supporting students and students with, who may present to us with some behavioral challenges. Also, we launched our virtual kindergarten information night last week. I think we had some glitches in our video, but we actually have really good initial enrollment. We have over 100 students register for kindergarten. You know, we're going to continue to anticipate about that 160-ish, 170-ish students coming into kindergarten for the coming year, but this is probably a higher number of students that have registered this early in the process. And so also just like to continue to remind people to register in the process. It really does help us with our class sizes and our student assignment process to have that information as, as early as possible.
Break into your, let me train a thought. Do you think we did a different way of communicating that the registration was open, that generated some success, or people have heard about it perhaps now that we're a full day?
Right, maybe it's that, you know, maybe it's that, the full day. Don, I don't know if you have other thoughts, and I think he's having another conversation there, but just thoughts on why the registration may have come in a little, like, our registration numbers are good right now. If you have a sense of why we're better, I think we were maybe reminding people more frequently, maybe it's part of an understood, part of sort of just our cycle of how things go.
Actually, we did everything the same way. Last couple years. I mean, I think it's probably just an ebb and flow, or, you know, maybe word gets around more of, people are just looking for more this year. Maybe there's more excitement around like full-day kindergarten and such, but yeah.
And our principals push it out in the principal newsletters also. We inform the preschools in the area, so again, taking a variety of approaches there. But it's, it's good news. Hopefully, it's not some indication of significant increase in, significant increase in enrollment, just earlier enrollment, we hope. The other thing I wanted to just point out, because this has been something, and I know when the board approved the school calendar for this current year, and then we have a day, a half-day in the calendar for next year, one of, it's what's called a half-day school improvement day. It's something that the State Board of Ed allows school districts to take a half-day, kind of bank instructional time, but it gives us something different than an after-school time with staff for professional development. It's also different than when we take those full-day institute days. And one of the concerns around doing a half-day would be opportunities for children. We know that that can be a challenge for families, working families in particular, to have children only in school for the half-day. And we did ask Riverside Parks and Rec early in the process to potentially partner with us, and so they've created a half-day kind of schools-out, school improvement activity. That flyer just came out, and so I've attached it here for you. So again, it kind of represents our, our ongoing efforts on making professional development opportunities accessible and motivating and, and all those good things, but also making sure that we're supporting families during those times as well. And that is it.
All right. Any questions? All right, if not, we will move on to tonight's consent agenda. Could the board secretary read the contents of tonight's consent agenda?
Sir, tonight's consent agenda consists of meetings from previous minutes of February 1st, 2023, Community of the Whole, February 15th, 23, regular business meeting, February 15th, 23, closed session meetings, the personnel report as presented in Board Book, the payables pre-lists from February 28th, 2023, and March 15th, 2023, a REC memorandum of understanding, which just consists of some miscalculated time that we needed to recoup, or I don't know what the right term is, compensate for, thank you, yes, and CEC empowered teams proposal, which, yeah, what is CEC? Something for change.
Not catalyst for.
Catalyst of education, education change, or, yeah. Contract with them to continue working with them on just priorities for the district as a third-party coaching type thing. And that is it.
All right. Let's see, and there's also, is there, is there a resolution?
Was the resolution part of this? No, that's a different thing.
Is that separate?
Yeah, that's a different.
Okay. All right, would anyone require pulling any of these items off for further discussion?
No.
All right. Well, then, is there a motion that the board, let's see, approve the consent agenda as presented?
Second.
All right, Kathy, can you call a roll?
Okay, Mr. Marhol. Mr. Barsati.
Aye.
Mr. Mayorhead.
Aye.
Ms. Gunn.
Aye.
Ms. Murphy.
Aye.
Oh, did you hear that? Sorry, aye.
Mr. Hunt.
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right.
Stephanie wanted to vote twice.
Chicago area. All right, so let's see, is there a motion that the Board of Education approve the resolution authorizing notice of non-renewal to non-tenured permanent substitute teachers for the individuals named in the resolution as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? So I guess as noted, this is for, I think this is a process we do each year, in that in the past, some to many of these teachers have been rehired. I'm not sure if that's the case or not, but.
Right, we don't, that'll be determined, so they'll.
That'll be determined later, yeah. Okay.
Dan, it's, I suppose to add to what you said, everyone on this list was here knowing that it was a year where we have, this is a procedural item, and they may be with us again next year.
They're considered non-long-term positions, and they're not part of our bargaining unit, so this is a process to essentially ensure they're, that they're not eligible for tenure. Some of them don't have the certifications that we would have in a, be required to have in a tenure position, but as you know, we added these positions during the pandemic as a way to really support filling in for classrooms where there's been some sub-s shortage, and I know our principals feel this is a very helpful piece in making sure that classrooms run smoothly day in and day out when there are some teachers out, out ill.
Is there any further discussion?
No.
All right, are we ready to vote? All right, Kathy, can you call a roll?
Okay, Mr. Barsati.
Aye.
Mr. Mayorhead.
Aye.
Ms. Gunn.
Aye.
Ms. Murphy.
Aye.
Mr. Marhol.
Aye.
Mr. Hunt.
Aye.
Okay.
All right, next is Riverside Education Council. I don't believe we have anyone from there tonight. Next up is board member comments.
We had the science fair last week, I think it was last week, and that went over pretty well. It was pretty well-attended. Felt like a, mostly a fourth grade thing. I don't know what happened with third and fifth grade, but a lot of fourth graders showed up to do the science fair. Everybody seemed to have a blast, so much more vibrant this year than it was last year. I think we were still kind of a little cautious with COVID stuff, and it was just a very different environment. Last year was the first year I got to participate, and it was a little dull just because of all that stuff. This year was like, everybody, you know, get in the gym, and Ms. Allen did a fantastic job, and the kids were like way into her and like chanting her name and all that. Just very different environment, very, a lot of energy in the, in the school that day. So I know in the past, I'd always heard about how much kids looked forward to it, so I think I finally experienced that this year, like what it used to be, so to speak. So that was a fun, fun activity. And thank you for the, the parent volunteers of, I don't know, I think there was five or six of them that I, I could notice of, that were, put it all together and helped organize it, get people where they were going and all that good stuff, so it was a fun event.
Anybody else? I don't know if it was just Blithe Park, we had, I think it was a week or a week and a half ago, the results of the hydroponic growing systems were distributed out to families. So I believe we got an allotment of lettuce and cucumber, and cucumber. Kind of disappointed I didn't get any, because the rest of the family liked it a lot, so, but that's always appreciated, and yeah, the kids quite enjoyed that. Glad that we had a good harvesting season. All right, anything else? All right, we will move on to committee reports. First up is Policy Committee.
I don't have anything new under Policy Committee as all of it will fall under Old Business Action Items, just closing out press 110 with the sections that fall under six and seven.
All right. Thanks, Stephanie. Next up is Facilities.
We have a superintendent's facilities meeting on the 28th, but the majority of the time is going to be spent later in the agenda with central Hauser campus discussions.
All right. Then next is Education Committee.
Nothing for tonight.
And then Personnel Committee.
Nothing for tonight, no.
Finance Committee.
Nothing for tonight.
Who's zipping along? Okay, which takes us to Old Business, which Joel was mentioning. So we have, this is not for action tonight, is my understanding correct?
This is significant discussion.
Significant discussion, yes.
Continuing presentation about the, as you see on the, sorry, I was going to say the board, but the screen, discussion about the field and what our options are with regards to natural grass or artificial turf. For to Steve, Ryan, and Jason for those discussions, for leading an intro presentation.
So thank you, Dan, for having us tonight. Just wanted to give you an update on the discussion. We scheduled a couple of field trips to see combination of synthetic turf fields as well as natural grass fields. That's been a discussion with Central Hauser, what is correct and how do each of those perform? So I think Joel and Dan can share a little bit with you about their take on those, but so we, we saw a combination of grass fields that have an engineered drainage system underneath them. We were not at that field trip, but then we also saw one that did not, and I think you speak to those differences, and then the turf field and that drainage and what that surface felt like. So it's, it's an ongoing discussion. We have a planning and zoning meeting scheduled for March 22nd, where we'll be reviewing the variations that we'll be requesting, including parking and fencing, so really just kind of. fencing. So really just kind of an intro to a discussion for you all and, you know, your takes. We've got some samples of materials if you'd like to see those that give you an idea of what synthetic turf is, what types of drainage systems are and how they work. A little bit of a refresher on a previous meeting that we, we had, I think it was August of '22. But so we're happy to answer any questions. And that's, that's kind of where we are today.
And to your point, Ryan, that's why Jason is here. We had the discussion six months ago.
It was August. Yeah.
But Jason, he can design two different field surfaces. Both of them do require significant investment in drainage infrastructure so that they work properly. I went out with Martha to a location in Forest Park that had a intensive drainage system with natural grass. I spoke to the park superintendent there. Then we met Monday, very cold day, to, in Schaumburg, where they have a very extensive turf field complex. And we learned a lot from him as well. Both individuals are very satisfied with the infrastructure they have. I, I have my own thoughts, but you should be asking questions. Jason, I don't know if Jason wants to hand out or let's see your additional, the show and tell items. There's, there's advantages and disadvantages to both. Natural grass is perhaps more vulnerable to damage and it doesn't dry out as quickly after a rain. Talking to River Forest, however, they indicated that if it rains, it's, the field is generally ready for use the day after. Martha and I were out there. We did not see any significant damage to the field from high use. When we spoke to Todd at Schaumburg, he noted that, that Schaumburg needs to be prefaced with the fact that it is a high-intensity facility. They have four turn, you guys.
So about 500 games a year.
They have 500 games. Yeah, high use. He noted that with their natural grass, it got the daylights beat out of it in the center of the field. But again, that's because it's high use. Then the turf.
Well, I think it was noted that they were able to up significantly up the number of games and that they're able to use it both for games and practice. Whereas previously when it was just a grass field, they'd mentioned it was games only. Otherwise, the, the fields would be torn to pieces.
Yes. But I, and that's, again, it's the high use issue.
The assumption is that.
Our field is not going to be as of high use. I mean, it's going to be used, but it's not 500 games a year of use.
That's kind of what I'm trying to preface is that both field types have a point and can be viable for what we want. The turf can be used when it's raining. It can be used when it's crazy cold. But again, the question is, is do we go out for gym in jackets? So Jason should.
And I'll just answer the part about do we go out for PE in jackets? Because April and I, and I know April's here tonight, but April and I chatted even earlier today that, you know, with a highly usable field and whether that means well-drained natural grass or artificial turf, you know, the thought is that PE would probably use the fields every single day for the great majority of the day, which would include also a midday, central recess. You don't see it as much now because the field isn't usable. So it's, but I know April was explaining that there are often four concurrent PE classes running at the same time. We have three, you know, we have a fitness room and we have two gyms. If there's four in there, one doesn't have health class, then we would double up in the larger gym, right? So that idea of having at least one class outside, probably at any given time during the day, would be the ideal use, would be the, you know, sort of the visionary use around, around that outdoor space.
And before Jason starts with show and tell, I think the other thing, Mr. Klucka noted that some of our fields look horrible. Note that those are not drained fields. They have, they do have drainage issues. The key when Jason goes to design something is to make sure the water goes away as quickly as possible. If you have standing water on anything, it becomes unusable. And that's a lot of what civil engineering is about, is getting rid of water in an efficient, permitted manner.
That's it. It boils down to that, really. It really does. It's. Yeah. Unfortunately, none of the, the trips that we took are exact comparisons in terms of use, you know. But I think if you were to categorize them, the turf, it was definitely high use, probably higher use than what, what Central Hauser would see. But the most usable, you know, grass, drained grass would be underneath that. And obviously, grass without drainage, you know, it takes the hardest beating, you know, and it takes the longest to drain. So.
Ask questions of Jason.
Yeah, we're happy to answer any questions. We're happy to pass out some materials to help you understand the types of systems.
We'll worry with everything, but maybe ask questions and I think.
Well, and I can't just, and I'll just inject around timing. So I think both DLA and WT, I mean, the group really wants clear board consensus and direction by the April 5th Committee of the Whole. So tonight's your night to ask a lot of questions.
And just for the reason, just to say that again, it's, it's. Backing up from a construction date and, you know, our, our public process is MWRT. So that's kind of what's triggering that, that April timeframe.
I suppose, up on the spot to start with, when we talk about cost of installing either, is there a significant difference?
Synthetic turf is significantly more.
With the caveat that natural requires more maintenance, probably over time.
Right, right. For sure.
So they may be a balance.
It might be a balance. I think if you do natural grass, you probably, especially with a, with a drainage, which we recommend. So this is probably the product we would use either with synthetic turf or with natural grass.
Describe how that would be installed.
So this comes in long rolls. And I'll pass that around.
I don't know how much, I don't know how much I think.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's a good point. Thank you. Yeah, no, no.
Glad you mentioned it. So I'll pass this around. But you could see, you could see through here, this is the way that the water drains this way. And this comes in large rolls. It's placed on the ground in a different way for natural grass, synthetic turf.
So this would be installed either regardless of what we choose as part of the drainage system.
In a different way though. So with synthetic turf, we would lay it flat down. So it would lay down just like you, you were holding it there.
Two sections. Like a carpet.
And, yeah, like carpet. And that would be get laid down in a herringbone pattern. So it kind of radiates out and gets the water that drains through the synthetic turf, picks it up, brings it to a, a pipe, which would then convey it out, probably to detention.
Synthetic turf or natural grass?
That's, that's only synthetic turf.
Oh, okay.
Right now. And then with the natural grass, it would be installed vertically. So on its edge. And, oh, there we go. So left side, natural grass, right side, synthetic turf. And either way, they, they would.
Thank you. I do. I know. I was there. I was present at the last show. But thank you.
Sure. So we're kind of starting from the bottom up right now. And since there's similarities between the two, natural grass, synthetic turf, that's why the, that's the first product to be passed around. In, if we do drainage in a natural grass field, there is the risk that the, the drainage can work too well in a drought condition. So you might, you usually want to irrigate the field as well as drain it. So when you're irrigating now, there is some possibility for the irrigation water to go straight into the drains rather quickly before the, before the grass can absorb it and use it. Some of that water can escape through, through the system. So there's, there's the added cost. Normally, we don't irrigate synthetic turf. It's done. But normally, it, it's done just to cool it down because the surface is significantly warmer on a synthetic turf than a natural grass field. And they've found that when they do irrigate it, it just raises the humidity. So it might lower the temperature, but if it's humid, it's not as comfortable for the users either. So that's a cost. That's an added cost that would be included in the natural grass, not necessarily synthetic turf is the irrigation water, irrigation system. The soils, you have a question?
Yeah. So I'm assuming that we're going to be putting, I mean, I'm not, I was looking for like, I'm the amount, but we're going to be putting more in of that because it's kind of vertically. And synthetic, we're going to, it's going to be natural. I mean, it's going to be horizontal.
So the, the synthetic turf actually has a nine-inch layer of stone beneath it. And that stone acts very much like the drains. It just kind of lets water through. So we only need to put the, the drains at maybe 30 feet on center. Whereas with grass, you're, you're putting them in a tighter spacing. So, yeah, certainly. And the existing soils are really clays, which don't drain very well. It's very difficult for water to infiltrate back into a clay surface. It's amazing how slow the water will drain through clay. It's usually, you're, you're measuring things in inches per month at that point. So it might be one inch per month or two inches per month. So it's extremely slow. It's, it's almost zero. It might as well be zero. So you're not going to really get that, promote that infiltration back into the ground. So that's why we need the underdrains to, to pick it up. In addition, the, the top layer of the soil, if we use the existing topsoil, you can imagine that, that light gray layer on the top of the natural grass. If that has a high clay content, now the water can't get through that to get to the underdrains. So we definitely want to bring in good clay, low clay content soil, topsoil to top dress it. And even intermixing to amend that soil with turfis or calcined clay, if you're familiar with baseball infield's, that product that, that they put to, to dry that. They intermix that with the topsoil and it keeps it aerated and, and also absorbs some moisture so that we don't have that issue with the, with the irrigation. It traps the moisture, slowly releases it back to the roots so that it doesn't pass through and go on its way. It can actually be captured and then released into the roots.
So if, if we were to do irrigation of a natural grass field, so that would be something that would be built into the field itself? Or it'd be external that would be put on it on occasion?
Could do either. I think that automatic sprinkler head irrigation is probably more desired. Otherwise, you're going to be lugging hoses and, and some kind of a watering cannon, cannon out there. Depending on how well it drains, that'll dictate how often we have to irrigate. So if it's not, if it's, doesn't need to be irrigated that much, you might consider a water cannon with hoses. But certainly, we would provide a water service out to the area. It's not like you'd bring it through the parking lot. You'd have at least a, a manhole with a, with a connection inside of it.
So I guess my, I guess the question here is, would we be always for maintenance on this? Are we going to, are we going to be doing it in-house? Or are you going to be having, is there going to be?
I would argue we would, we would hire outside.
I mean, we kind of have our basic landscape needs already. So, yeah.
And I know that actually, you didn't see this, but when I was poking through some of the River Forest stuff, they have actually hired one of the local landscape companies to do all of their fields. Whereas in our case, we would be hiring them to maintain a specific location. So that gives us the opportunity probably to hold them more to account for things that they miss or, you know, makes them more responsible for a very specific location. But it's a cost.
All right, right.
When we visited Schaumburg, he said that they really need to go out, they go out to the turf fields before every, every tournament. And they smooth everything out and make sure that all the leaves, plastic leaves, I don't know what to call them, are, the blades are sticking straight up because if they're not sticking straight up, they don't act the way they should. So there's maintenance there as well. He did say they don't do this often, but it is possible to actually plow the artificial field, but they don't like to do that. Just because you're driving a truck on it, that's harder on the, the turf blades. So there's perhaps.
So they have to put like plastic on to the blades.
They take a last piece of PVC pipe, put it on the bottom of the plow blade and basically just push the snow. But they don't like to do that for the fact that you're running a truck over something that really is only meant for people. So I don't know that we would want our, our own staff doing that either.
It's also said that for the artificial surface, that it doesn't take much sunlight or much break in the, in the surface itself. Is that if there's a little bit of green, the sun will hit it, it heats up.
It warms up and the snow melts very.
Melts out around it. And I think, where you mentioned as well, there's like some people will do like trash cans or something like that.
Yeah. So somebody invented a, a system, which is basically just black garbage cans. And they just set them out in a certain pattern. And then that starts the melting. And then once the melting started, it radiates out on its own. So it's a pretty smart invention. Should have done it myself, but didn't. Simple. But also, who, what's to stop somebody else from just buying garbage cans instead of his system, right?
Did you have some of the, the filler material for the turf? And the way it was explained is at least a Schaumburg, they did a layer of, the blades are two inches tall. They put down a layer of sand, basically to weight the turf down so it doesn't have the opportunity to blow away because it's essentially a big plastic sheet. And then they have the either cork or olive core material. And then they have the, the rubberized fill. I think it has a certain name, but I don't remember the name right now.
The crumb rubber fill?
The crumb, it's, but it's not really crumb rubber because it's, it's manufactured.
This is the pure select, which is the olive core. So the first, the first one that's going around this way, counterclockwise, is crumb rubber. So it's just crushed, crushed tires, ground up tires.
But I think it's been said that's not something we would use.
Right. So that's, that's been the standard for a long time. There's definitely a move away from, from that just because it was a tire. There's been a lot of studies by both sides. No final results, but I think just because of the, the connotations of it, I think people are moving away from that. Then, there's so many different infills options. But the one that Schaumburg used was a Cool Play. So it's, it's a green product that keeps the, keeps the field a little bit cooler, still warmer than natural grass, but does keep it cooler. And it is, it is not a recycled tire. So it's a little bit less of a connotation of, you know, something dirty or, you know, a rubber product.
It's a uniquely manufactured item specifically for use on the turf.
I was just going to say, the other aspect of it is it does cool the field down, hence the name Cool Play. So it does lower the temperature a little bit.
Versus the crumb rubber.
Yeah, the rubber, which is black, which obviously absorbs more heat. Gray one is EPDM. So it's, it's actually the molecular, molecularly, it's the same as the crumb rubber, which is a tire, but it's, never was a tire. So it, it might come from roofing. They use it for roofing, but it's the scraps. They, they cut that up and that's what the EPDM, the, again, the gray, the gray product is.
So I guess, I just, I, I know this is, there's basically what we decide on, like determines the cost. But I guess in regards to usability, based on your experience, for, for what we have here, this type of environment, where there's a lot of water, where when it rains, you get left, I mean, we do have flooding. What, I mean, in regards to usability, which one would you say is better drainage that we could use, I'd say, more times out of the year than the other?
From a usability standpoint, I don't think there's any argument. Synthetic turf is, is generally the most, it provides the most usability for, for a field, especially if you're landlocked and you don't have, you don't have space where you can let the grass rest between uses, then. then synthetic turf in general around here is, is what's chosen by most users.
Like, I know Jim Fitton, I don't know if you can hear me back there, you came back with an anecdote from the Schaumburg visit about the number of games played on turf versus the number of games played on natural grass, do you remember what that was?
But I think the anecdote might be the, if you wanna, if you wanna grow grass.
Oh, there's that.
Stay off it. Is that, is that the one?
But the one was about, that's the number of games too that were played, yeah.
I think they were, when they were grass fields, they were at about a hundred and eighty games a year, and when they went to all turf fields, and they, they've got ten fields, so they've got a lot, they went to five hundred games a year, so that speaks to the usability, so.
Five hundred per field.
Right, exactly.
What was the other number, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the first one.
One eight.
One eight.
One eight.
To five hundred.
It was once per day, and they weren't using it multiple times a day, whereas the, the, the artificial turf was allowing them to like essentially play all day.
I guess in regards to, like, I know we were talking about the upfront costs, synthetic would obviously be higher, but I guess in regards to maintenance, I mean, what are we looking at sort of a maintenance schedule compared to, compared to the two?
How do you manage?
Well, I mean, obviously with natural grass, you're gonna have to cut it, you're gonna have to irrigate it, you have to water it, I guess, what are the, like, what are the maintenance, I mean, what do we have to do to maintain synthetic? And I guess then my question is, then how often will we be looking at like a replacement, because I'm assuming that it wouldn't last.
Schaumburg was replacing theirs every twelve to fifteen years, they've already replaced it once. And that's when they, they've slowly been taking away their crumb rubber fields and going to the Cool Play material. Their biggest issue with the turf was that you have to pay attention to the seams, because if the seams start to go, start to split, imagine just a carpet, then it's better to maintain that right away than let it go. Natural grass is going to require normal landscape maintenance. That's, that's not, that's without question, it will have to be maintained properly, if it's not maintained like anything, it will not be functional at some point. That becomes on us, however.
And then that part about when it is fallen, I think that was what, after like snow, after it's been covered with snow, that's when you had to drag it to.
The artificial, and Jason will talk to me here, but artificial to properly operate wants to have all of the fill into blades that are sticking straight up. When blades are laying down, that's when they start to get more vulnerable to breakage, so part of the maintenance on the field is to basically bluff it up. So they'll put new, I don't know that they put new sand all that often, but they need to spread things out and make sure it's level and make sure that those plastic blades are sticking up.
There's an inch or two of infill that goes into the, into the root zone of that, of that carpet that you see, and that makes your surface that you're standing on, and then the fibers that stick up above that, if those fibers lay down, there's a natural where it creases, where, at the surface, that's a break point, so it gets worn at that spot because it's crimping itself. So that's, that's why you have to go through with the brush to stand up those fibers so that they're not bent over, getting crushed down, crimping that, that point where it, where it comes out of the infill.
I was gonna say, depending on the, on the frequency, or, I'm wondering if that's something our own maintenance would have to do on their own, rather than wait for a regular maintenance crew?
Schaumburg was doing that every month to a month and a half, and you can imagine those fields are getting quite a bit aware, and he didn't even feel that that was necessary to do it that often, but he just felt, well, we just do it, so it's, so we know it's done. The, most users do that themselves, so it's just a little, you know, just to pull behind, you have a tractor, and then it's just a series of brushes that you pull behind and you just have to go through the whole field and, and that'll pull them up. In worst case scenarios, you might have to do it twice, two passes through the, through the field area, but it's certainly something that could be done by anybody. And the only thing, you, you might not use a tractor that you use on natural grass, because any kind of leaks, any oil leaks, you know, won't go away as, as quickly if they did fall onto the synthetic turf, so you'd probably want a clean tractor for use on the, on the synthetic turf surface.
So I mean, I don't mean to like, sound like nifty here, but I know you said something about putting things on the, like, driving on the grass on synthetic turf, so I take it, like, there's, I guess, what's the weight limit? Because it sounds like you can drive a tractor, but we can't drive a car or something like that.
You can drive a car or a truck.
Without damaging, I mean, the damaging, I guess.
Yeah, right, yeah, no, I, but, and you actually can, there's just some, there's some limitations on what you can do. You really don't want to be turning the wheel quickly, making sharp turns, that, that will cause damage, and you just want it to be slow. Just like driving a hybrid, you wanna, everything you do is accelerate slow, you're slow, slow, and you drive at a slower rate of speed. Same thing with the, with the synthetic turf, you can go, you could drive actually a real, a very large vehicle across it if you needed to for maintaining, let's say we had tall lights. We won't, but if you did, you could bring a crane out there to get those, if you just put some plywood down, that's all, so, and drive slow, so.
So in terms of upfront costs, I think it's definitely, it's been established turf is much bigger investment upfront, but given the degree of, of drainage or, or pre-staging the environment before we planted the grass for our field, I mean, how much comparison is there way to ballpark that? Is it, you know, twice as much, is it three quarters as much, is there any way to ballpark it in terms of what costs might be for one scenario versus the other?
Yeah, I'd say that synthetic turf is, is at least twice as much, if not more.
Over the long haul, I mean, yeah.
Well, over the installation costs, but not factoring in the maintenance?
Yeah, yeah, I'd say even if we did factor in the maintenance, it would still be double, but, yeah, upfront, more than double, and then diminishing returns on the, on the, in the, in the overall time, overtime.
So I guess using that same formula, what would we be looking at, like, sort of comparative maintenance, because maintenance will be, grass will be more synthetic, less, if you know. I'm sorry.
I'm like trying?
I, I guess, in regards to the, the maintenance cost, I mean, what are we looking at, twice as much to maintain the grass versus twice compared to synthetic, or are we looking, is fifty percent more, or how much more are we looking, or, can you, I mean, ballpark that?
Right, it's difficult to tell because you don't know, right, but probably, probably two to three times more maintenance of natural grass. Depending on a lot of factors, but I think in that range, that'll be about right.
Yeah, but I, I was just gonna say, I know that Ramesh did some early costs, and I think it was January of twenty-two when we first started talking about the different turf options versus grass, so we can update those costs and look at very specific maintenance programs that we would specify for this to give you a better idea, rather than just a ballpark.
And I guess, because I didn't want to put you in this box, because I know everything sort of depends on a lot of things, but that's, I guess, if we can get sort of better costs on what the actual, what it will cost to maintain grass versus synthetic.
Yeah, we can, we can come back to you with that, for sure.
So I know there was a discussion, I believe, at a previous meeting as well, now wondering about for surface requirements of our overall lot, you know, with grass being impervious surface, being able to account for drainage, and some questions in terms of would a turf field count as impervious?
That's a very good question, because it's a little complicated, the village looks at the synthetic turf surface at, from a zoning standpoint, the village looks at it as a hundred percent impervious surface, so you're treating it, they're treating it as if it was a parking lot or a building, from a zoning standpoint. From a stormwater standpoint, they follow the MWRD rules, which they look, the MWRD looks at synthetic turf not as grass, not as impervious parking lot, but midway between. So they've, they've, hey, there's, there's more runoff that comes from a synthetic turf, but it's not quite as much as it would be from a building or a parking lot, so they've looked at it in the middle. So that, and that's the ordinance that the village has adopted, so they've, they're looking at it from a stormwater perspective as somewhat more, more impervious than grass, less impervious than a parking lot, so the detention goes up, the detention requirements go up when for synthetic turf.
So I guess I have a question sort of in regards to the way it's zoned then, if they sort of look at it in between, so with synthetic, are we looking at runoff and like natural drainage going down? Or are we looking at like it's running off to like the parking lot, or the street or something like that?
Truthfully, because the, the clays beneath are clay, it's really gonna be, it's gonna end up being runoff one way or the other. The, the grass would absorb more moisture before it goes, so there definitely would be more runoff water from synthetic turf than natural grass, which is true.
And because of, I can speak to the zoning rules, I'm comfortable with this one. The village would then expect that there is more impervious in the parking lot, like pervious pavers or stormwater storage to deal with the village zoning requirements. Like Jason said, the village will follow MWRD with regards to what ultimately happens to the water.
I think we're planning on putting a pretty extensive, like, I don't know if catch basin is the right term to use, but like a large storage container, so to speak, because I think I remember one of our meetings in the past talking about holding like two days' worth of water or something like that, so I, like, the picture I have in my head is we're gonna put a big hole in the ground, and then we're gonna cover it on top so that all that water can go in there and then like gradually seep in, is that, I mean, very simplified way of thinking about it, but.
Gradually seep in and gradually release back to the, to the store system.
Also, some of, okay, so some of that water will gradually go into the storm system instead of flooding it, and then some of that will go back into the ground, which is where we really prefer it to go anyway, but I think I remember you saying some, something about like the clay and just how bad that, I mean, you repeated it today, so I've heard that a couple times, like, I just have that stuck in my head, like, the water really doesn't have anywhere to go when it rains a lot, just because of our environment.
And we don't want to hold it more than a two or three days, because then the water can get anaerobic, you know, and just stinky and just not, it's gonna be a negative to hold it longer than that, because then we're releasing dirty water back into the system, so we only have a couple days' worth of infiltration to be done, and then after that, we're slowly releasing it back into the, into the, the public system.
R B has a similar system to that, the swim club also has a similar system. You've got a mini system of such, similar at Blythe.
Ames.
Ames has it as well, where we store some water underground and let it percolate down or out over time. So that really doesn't factor into this discussion, because no matter what, we have to deal with the water. There is no option around that.
Yeah, this is just about the usability of the surface, the water's gonna do what, I mean, the water situation is its own thing, it's just what do you put on top of it to use it?
I'm wondering here, you mentioned Blythe has drainage, that's an interesting.
In the parking lot?
In the parking lot, okay, so not in there, that, that, I believe that's a park district playground they have there.
No, it's not in the park district. The, sorry, there's, there's no, there is no designed or engineered drainage anywhere in Riverside parks that I am aware of. That was specifically why Martha and I went to Keystone Park and River Forest, I knew that that had been designed as an engineered system in two thousand and five, and I don't know if you, you guys thinking about talking to them, but I don't know if you got a chance to.
Well, I'm, I'm thinking of a specific use that they do at Blythe Park for my kids anyway, and on days when it snows, you know, it's always bring your snow pants, they're going out for, you know, for recess that day, out and playing in the snow, and I'm wondering, you know, I don't know if they do that at Central now, or if.
They play on the parking lot.
They play in the parking lot, okay, but not in snow pants, obviously.
Well, I think they still put snow pants on, yeah.
Okay, well, so then.
Kids can find the snow.
Wouldn't sure how much, we'll cover it, especially this year, there's been a whole lot of snow. I'm, I'm wondering, so then, would we be putting them on this field if it were turf, or would that potentially damage the turf? Or would it, again, as was mentioned, if there's a little bit of sunlight, it'll melt off, so they wouldn't be able to use it for that type of play anyway?
Uh, snow doesn't really slow it, there is a, a temperature where it, the fibers become brittle, but it's extreme cold, probably wouldn't be having recess, negative thirty or below temperatures, that's when the fibers get brittle. So there is a.
Kids in, what is it, ten, ten degrees or something, there's a number, there's a threshold, we don't do outdoor recess.
Yeah, it's, it's very cold when they're, when it starts.
Still wanna go out anyway.
Right. Yeah, yeah, you could be on the snow on, on top of the turf, synthetic turf.
So Joel, at the River Forest, what is the typical use of the fields that you are looking at, because it sounds like the Schaumburg thing is like far beyond what we're talking about.
I have my own opinion, so I've tried to neutralize, okay, oh, but no, I've tried. Schaumburg is super high intensity use.
Yeah.
And part of what they want artificial, because Schaumburg is a separate unit of government than the city of Schaumburg, so they get all of their revenue through a little bit of tax money and about half of it through field rentals, so they have a vested interest in making those fields a hundred percent usable for all of the outside organizations that want to rent.
Well, that makes sense, maybe you've got five hundred games per field, all that, like, you better have a good facility.
They bring in, I wrote it down, but I might not be able to find it quick enough, I think they said something about bringing in twenty-eight thousand people for tournament time.
Well, that's clearly not our plan.
Yeah.
So, and that's why, that is a perspective, Keystone, um.
Where do they park?
They had, sorry, say that again.
No, don't.
Keystone is, got a soccer field on it, it's got a baseball field off to one side.
Like, how much activity, like, is that more along the range of kind of what we're talking about here?
Probably, I would say it is, because when I spoke to him, they tend to have all of their games during, well, at least during, sorry, spring and fall during non-school hours, where we would have all our activity during school hours.
Yeah, like, the most heavy activity would probably be during.
So the heavy activity is kind of isolated towards one point in the, or a time period in the day, whereas the rest of the time it's not as intensively used. Keystone Park, the baseball infield is artificial, and that was funded by some local baseball organizations so they can get out and practice in January and February. At Schaumburg, the soccer fields were artificial, whereas the baseball fields were all natural. So one of my takeaways was with soccer or football or whatever, when you have a high intensity use that's generally in the same area, that beats the daylights out of a field, whereas baseball perhaps in the outfield or with more running around, it's spread out more, so it does matter.
You're gonna get the concentration of where the players stand, you've got cleats, you've got, you know.
Concentration of use is bad, there's no question about that.
Because we look at any, I mean, just looking at any kind of professional baseball field, the center of center field and the center of right field, I mean, that's where the players typically stand is where you've got it.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to.
That's where they have the grow lights when.
Yeah, exactly.
When they take, and the players aren't there.
Yeah, so I'm just trying to think, I don't think Schaumburg, like, while the, the information about it is really good, like, the usage is nowhere even close to what we're talking about. So I'm trying to go back to, I don't know if Martha or April would be the right ones to ask here, but if P E teachers were here, like, what is our anticipated use of that field compared to what we do today, which is nothing? I'm thinking in my head, you've got, I mean, we're not doing like full contact sports, we're not playing like any kind of high level competition, regular use, regular whatever, we're gonna have, We're gonna have, just thinking back to my P E days, there's gonna be like a third of the kids that don't wanna participate anyway. And like, there's gonna be moping around, right? There's gonna be the others that are like super intense in it. You're not gonna be using the whole field at the same time. We could probably rotate around. You're talking about one or two classes a day. We've got.
No, we're talking about one or two classes an hour.
An hour.
One or two classes every forty minutes.
Up to four classes.
Yeah. So April, do you wanna share a little bit about?
Just trying to get a better sense of like the actual usage that we're talking about.
I would sort of say six hours a day, five days a week, six to seven hours.
Yes. So we have anywhere from one to four P E classes per period every forty minutes. Um, usually three or four going every forty minutes. Um, if they had a usable surface that was not muddy, not gonna break an ankle on, um, they would be using that until it got too cold to be outside, um, every period. In the fall, we have soccer. So we would be able to do our soccer practices and games there rather than, right now, our students walk all the way to the park on Harlem to do their games. They do practice back here right now. Um, but then again, in the fall, if it's been too muddy, then they, the soccer team has to come inside or do a, you know, a drill kind of thing rather than being on the grass. Um, Central would be able to use it on a daily basis then for their recess as well. So we would make sure that our schedule, um, was so that there were no P E classes during the central recess time so that it could be used by both schools. And I think it would have hi- very high usage, um, until probably November. And if we got a nice November, they would be out there.
And the kinds of activities they're doing in P E, maybe could elaborate on that.
So, um, yeah, I know you said, there's always the thirty percent moping around. Um, P E has changed a lot.
Yeah.
It's, it's really about active movement, um, and getting kids moving. Um, so they do still do traditional soccer, flag football, um, softball. But they're also doing a lot of fitness type things where they would be doing, um, relays, running, um, different kinds of, movement. Um, right now, they walk the perimeter of the, or run the perimeter for warmups. Um, it would be a lot easier. I know if they had straightaways that they could, um, go. But right now, they, they go around the edge because of, there's a lot of divots out there.
And I was like, what did you say they practice? Soccer?
So in the fall, we have our soccer teams, seventh and eighth grade soccer teams. So about, what would that be? Probably forty-four, fifty athletes out there for practice each day. Um, and that starts at the beginning of the school year and goes for about six weeks. So mid-October.
That's, I would guess that would probably be the most individually intensive activity that the field would see compared to like P E. You don't have cleats and.
Right.
All that kinda stuff. But that, I mean, they're, they're legit trying to play soccer out there and practice for their games. So, okay.
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah, P E, that would be where you'd probably see more in, in the, well, of course it's soccer, so you move a lot. You're not really standing still. P E classes would be doing such different things throughout the time. It would be all over the place and not in one place.
Yeah.
Um, and soccer, they move a lot too. So it's not like a baseball or a softball field.
Right.
So I don't know that if we'd anticipate any kids using it after hours or adding to that somehow. I mean, I, I just thinking, thinking of the Schaumburg place, when in the grass fields that they had, they had signs. You know, definitely you stay off, don't use.
I don't think we could do that.
No, I mean, if anything, we've taken the opposite approach that these are community properties. Um, as we know, like when we built the playground at Ames, we've heard about, you know, lots and lots of after school activity and weekend activity. Um, I think we've decided that there is one of the youth recreational, like, uh, one of the younger.
I believe the T-ball uses the field right now.
And I think everyone kinda looks at it as like, oh, you know, it does, it has a lot of divots, has a lot of uneven ground. Um, is it? But if it was nicely maintained, whether it's turf or natural grass, I would speculate that there would be even more after school use and weekend use.
To that concern, the existing field stinks. It's not well maintained. It's a bowl. So it, there's lots of water that sits there. It's not drained. Um, it's muddy. It's not well maintained. It's the example of exactly how something shouldn't be done, but it's not a good comparison to what artif- what turf or grass could be. So, I mean, the public comment was good, but it's not, you know, the front of Ames is bad. It, there's a puddle there. Well, if, whenever you have a puddle, you're gonna get, you're going to get mud. So.
Yeah, I kinda brought that up at the last meeting and I think, uh, I think Ryan kinda, or you, one of you two is like that. We didn't, we didn't design it for that type of use. Like, it does not have that type. So it wasn't a good comparison.
And maybe it's something that we should go back and look at at some point.
Maybe. I mean, it's a much smaller grassy area.
So I'm not suggesting that.
This is gonna be, and this is gonna be a substantially larger field too. I'm not sure if I should look at, but like, we are dramatically increasing the space of this field, I think, if that's, from what it is to what it, the thirty or forty thousand square feet right now.
Can you, Dan, can you push us to the, uh, the field view? Yes, thank you.
So right now, I think we're at thirty-seven thousand square feet, uh, for the existing field. And the new field would be forty-one thousand square feet.
Okay.
So.
I was thinking it was a lot smaller than thirty-seven, but still getting four thousand extra square feet out of it. So, yeah.
We shift the things over there.
Of course. Well, I think we were up to like fifty-something at one point, but then we had to, yeah.
Yeah.
But I guess the thing is.
Balancing the playground.
You know, um, April stated, what we, no, the, the field's gonna get a lot of use. Are there gonna be five hundred games on the field? No, but it's gonna, it sounds like it's gonna be used regularly during the school day. It's gonna be reused after school and it's gonna be used on the weekends. So it's going to get a lot of, I mean, I think the, long story short, it's gonna get a lot of use.
It's gonna get a fair amount of use.
Yeah. Now, I was trying to say, like, so how does, how does that compare to Forest or, um, River Forest? Cause that's a park district. So I gotta imagine they've got.
It's all that different. Um, when I spoke to the River Forest gentleman, he actually said that properly graded, a properly graded field is sufficient. He thought the overly designed drainage system was too much for what he needed. Um, they get, they're hea- like I said, they're heavy uses after school. It's lit. So they do get more evening use than say we would see. Um.
And, you know, we'll have to, you know, sort of sort it out for supervision and structures. And we've talked about the, I think of Central students, they're gonna be two hundred children out, you know, who will have the opportunity to use the, the play structure and the, the field space, um, all at one time, which is different than the soccer team or a baseball team. You know, it's hard, it's hard even for me to gauge. So what does that mean to have two hundred kids just running around? Yeah, playing tag, you know, yeah, yeah, kickball. I mean, that's, yeah.
How long, uh, April, how long is recess for Central?
I, I wanna say it's an hour total because they do half of them and the other half. Then just to put into context, P E classes, um, that would be twenty-five to a hundred kids, depending on how many P, P E classes were going. But that would just kinda give you more of an estimate of number of kids that would be out on the field during a potential period.
It's even like looking at the River Forest field. That's what I was trying to guess, like Monday through Friday all day compared to a field that's doing after school soccer and then probably heavy, heavy use on a Saturday, Sunday.
It still seems like ours would be used more.
Those are just unique comparisons. I think it's, I think there would be a lot of use.
I think it's similar. I don't.
Go ahead and hold on.
No, sorry.
No, I just, I'll go back to you. Keep, I'm trying to pick my people. Um, but with the maintenance piece of it, so soccer's gonna be practiced in that box. We don't really have a baseball team or anything like that. The kids are gonna be all over the place for P E. So I'm, I'm envisioning like different spots of the field or maybe certain spots of the field having a little more.
Soccer would just be in that square.
Well, that's where we're gonna mark it off. So I assume that's where they're gonna practice for P E. I mean, I mean, they don't have to, but it's, just trying to visualize it of like where the use is gonna happen. But with proper maintenance, you see a divot or you see a spot that's getting worn. Like this, you'd have to, I assume these come in like tiles or something like that, but you could roll out another thing of sod, give it two weeks or something like that, right? Like, how? If you see it starting to get worn down, right here, you keep going to, and this is where I've kinda, I've, I've been on both sides of this for months now. If we maintain it properly, which we have not done because it's not worth maintaining, if we maintain it properly, then I think we would get a lot of longevity out of a natural grass field, right? So even with some of the heavy use that we're talking about, we could, you could, you could do spot repairs and, and all that. Like, it's fixable to, to some degree, right? And so we could keep it looking nice. Yeah.
It takes time and you have to stay off of it while it's growing the grass. So that's, that's the main, that's probably the biggest drawback.
But like, could we theoretically do like a, a summer project to fix a spot or something if it gets worn down during the school year? And then you, I mean, not that nobody would use it during the summer, but you'd have less activity and then it'd be ready for the fall again. And so I think, I'm, I'm, go ahead.
To your point though, we, I mean, if we did this during summer, we could conceivably block off like.
Whatever section it is. Yeah, sure.
Access to, access to.
You would just fence it, fence off.
Put up some temporary blockage or whatever. Yeah.
Snow fence. A lot of people just put the snow fence across, uh, the area and that's how they, they keep the people off. Summer's not the best time for, for grass growth because it's just too hot for it. So ideally, it's a, it's a, it's a early spring.
System. So.
Yeah.
We'll be going to senior school.
Well, so, so I'm wondering though, so I think we've, we've known it's determined. So it's a higher initial investment for turf and there's a ten to twelve or ten to fifteen, however long lifespan. And then essentially you're starting over, you're paying that price again, ten to fifteen years down the road. So if.
Can I clarify one thing about that?
Yeah, go ahead.
So that, uh, we have a lot of base work that goes into the synthetic turf. So a lot of stone under drainage.
Okay, that's valid.
That gets reused. So it's, it's the only, just with the, that part. Yeah. So the infill, the infill and the carpet, um, and the infill can be used to some degree. Um, you know, we wanna, especially if we use one of the more expensive other options rather than the standard crumb rubber, wanna consider reusing that if you can. Not, not always, you can't always do it with all of them, but, uh, many of them, you can reuse the infill even. So.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
That's, that's a valid point. I appreciate you bringing that up. Um, but I'm, I'm wondering, so on, on the turf side, where, where, excuse me, on the, uh, grass side, if we're, we're having an initial investment for grading for drainage and is it just maintenance from there, there, that point on? Or is it after ten or twenty or so many years, does it have to be regraded or somehow re-improved or replanted? Or I guess is, is there an, an upwards usability limit on just grass and it's graded?
I think it's main, just maintenance. Now, I don't know of the degree of the maintenance. It might be pretty extensive maintenance. If, uh, especially if things, uh, aren't maintained regularly, then you might have a, a, a big summer project where you're trying to get it back. It doesn't sound like that's the way we're gonna go. I don't think you'd, you'd leave it that, you know, that long. You'd probably maintain it. You'd stay on top of it, I think. And I think that'd be the best for your users too, so that you don't have muddy areas that, once they start getting muddy, they just, they grow. They don't, they don't get better on the, on the, on their own. You have to, um, uh, maintain them quickly, uh, as quick as you can. Corridor them off.
Is that something we should rely on the maintenance company to do for us?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's their job.
I mean, I just, I'm, I'm not sure how often they're showing up. I don't know.
We give them a contract and we, sorry, this is, it's out, we, depending on the value, we may or may not have to put it out to bid. W T or Ryan or both develop a spec of here's what we want this to look like at the end of the day. This is what you're maintaining. And then they tell us how much that's gonna cost. That's how a maintenance contract works. You tell them what you want and their obligation is to make that happen. We're not telling them to go fix the mud pit. They have to fix that as part of their contractual obligation. It all depends on how tightly that spec is written, um, how tightly we call them out on, hey, you forgot a hole. That's more of a ongoing detail in a lot of ways. Uh, sorry, go on. No, I was just thinking about, and I, you already know how I'm thinking about this. So, um, the park district, River Forest is able to maintain or has managed to maintain a well-drained field for, since two thousand and five with an outside maintenance contractor in a viable way on a park district budget. It's not impossible. I think that's my answer. And it's, it's a reasonable cost for what you get.
It appears that, uh, Keystone Park might be the only park they have in town.
They have some other locations. They do because, uh, they were, I, um, when I was reading the article, they were, they hired the landscaping company to do all the parks in, in town.
There are a few others.
Yes, uh, sorry, corner, I didn't mean to point, corner of, of Lake Street in Harlem is River Forest.
I thought that might.
And there's a smaller, it's called Centennial. And then that, uh, one of the elementary schools has a park district field up a more northern part.
Yeah. I don't know if there's anything to the north of town either. I didn't look.
I thought if it was the only park, it probably had a lot of use. So that's why I was.
Uh, that park does have a lot of use because it has lights. That was, there was a lot of debate at some point or another in River Forest about the use of lights and how many more people that was going to attract. So.
We are not looking at putting lights.
No, I, I know that, but that was part of the, uh, debate.
What, what would the reality, let's just say we, so I'm, I'm leaning, I think, I've thought about this for a really long time. And one time I was heavy on turf, then I was heavy on natural, then I'm heavy on turf again. Now, like, I'm leaning back towards natural. Let's just say we do this and in three years, we realize it's just a disaster. What is the reality of tearing it all out and putting it in? Uh, money aside, I mean, it'd be, be expensive, but like, is it easy as just like peeling off the grass and rolling out the carpet? Or is there a huge project that would need to be done to turn it into turf?
Dig it down another twelve inches?
Yeah, it would basically be digging twelve inches of dirt out, hauling it away, bringing in stone and, uh, new under drains, cause those, those under drains that we would use would be destroyed in the, in the process.
With the big hole in the ground holding the water, like nothing happens with that. It's just that top layer that would really need to be taken off and.
The hole in the ground would get larger too.
That would have to be bigger.
With the synthetic turf.
Okay. Oh, because there's not, there's nothing there to absorb it. So it has.
The grass has less.
Something else to consider, the way it was, it's been described, that if we're talking about it's being viewed as impervious surface or something that has to be compensated for, that if we don't have enough pervious stone in the parking lot, you know, we have to redo a lot more potentially to get it, to get the zoning approved.
Yeah.
Um, with the unknown, if we're, we're doing natural grass or synthetic turf, I've already put a lot of thought into this, the stormwater part and how it changes with the different options. So, uh, so far, what I've, I'm approaching the, the design, I'm providing a vault under the parking lot, uh, which accounts for natural grass field. And then I was planning on augmenting that with, uh, a different system. So that's gonna be a concrete vault under the parking lot because you got cars on top of it. Uh, but I was gonna augment that detention system with a plastic system, uh, under the synthetic turf field, um, which would make up the difference between natural grass, synthetic turf. It would make up that difference. So we could probably do the same thing there. So it would be a little bit more than twelve inches cause we'd have to over dig a little bit more for, uh, some kind of arch plastic, uh, system beneath there. But it wouldn't be much more than what we're planning on if we did synthetic turf now. The only difference would be you'd have some, you'd have some time and energy invested into trying to develop synthetic, uh, natural grass field that we would tear up. I guess that's the loss.
Yeah, I was kinda thinking that, Dan, cause it, it just feels like from the feedback that we have, there seems to be, and it's not like we've gotten a massive amount of feedback, but there's parties that really don't care and then there's parties that care greatly. And the parties that care greatly seem to lean towards the natural. And I'm thinking if we go natural, because it's all a bunch of what ifs and we're what if-ing, well, what if it doesn't work? We should've gone with this. Well, if we gotta go back for a zoning, we can go back and say like, look, this is still a disaster. We did everything we possibly could. This is for the schools. I, I think we could probably change opinions on that zoning. It would cost us more money. Personally, I kinda like the idea of having the. Personally, I kind of like the idea of having the natural better for a lot of the reasons people brought up. It just kind of fits in with the nature of the town a little bit better. My concern has been the usability. But it, it sounds like if we just put the, the time and the energy into it, we design it properly, we can get, it's not going to be 100% use like this, but if we lose a day when it rains, it's not like it rains every day here. I'm sure the PE teachers would probably feel differently about that because they want to get the kids out and they want to move them and all that kind of stuff. But like trying to balance all these different things, it feels like we could do a natural grass system. And then if it blows up in our face, we just go back and say, this still sucks. We need help putting the new one in.
To that point, Wes, that that becomes what the variance request is because it's a, it becomes, the variance request is partially based on hardship. And then the justification is the natural didn't work. We have a hardship, we need to replace it with something. You wanted us, you planning and zoning pushed us into certain things like natural or the community and it didn't work. So the hardship is trying to balance those different requirements and still fulfill our own function. And if the well-engineered field just doesn't work out, then replacing it becomes the hardship.
And my concern is with that replacement cost, which is why I kind of asked that last question. Is there is going to be a replacement cost, but it's not going to be the full cost because we can reuse a good chunk of it. But there will be a pretty substantial, I'm going to guess, cost of digging all that soil and everything out and then the new material and stuff. But we gave it the good old college try and it just didn't work, right? But to note, I mean, hopefully that'll help with the drainage because I think we're going to have to go with the engineered mulch stuff here. And as was noted at Hollywood, the same thing happens at Ames. Like the kids kick all that stuff out, it becomes a bowl, the water pools, they put tape around it so that nobody can use it. It takes forever to drain out. But we didn't put engineered drainage systems in either of those two playgrounds, which didn't help, isn't helping that cause. Whereas hopefully this, this whole area will be better suited for that. So I guess, I don't know, trying to, we could talk about this all night. And I know, and I know Linda doesn't want to do that, so. I'm going to stop picking you up.
You, you want to do it as you want.
No, I just, trying to, you need an answer from us tonight. We've got.
But be prepared to next share a clear direction at the committee of the whole.
But you need it by the committee of the whole.
Yeah.
But your meeting was zoning, your meeting, yeah, zoning and planning is next week, right? And I know they're going to ask about this because they asked a lot about it at the last meeting. So we should probably have a little clearer direction for them. I, I think it's going to be hard because if they're going to look at this as a variance and we go in and we say we don't need a variance or we don't know if we need a variance and then we come back and we ask for another variance, I think that's going to be tough.
That's going to be much harder. We know that the village board is changing to some degree. So some of the things that were known where different people lean will change a little bit as well. It's better to come to a planning and zoning with all of the variances in place rather than come back later saying, oops, sorry. And do we need a straw poll? Dan, suggesting things. I mean, my final word is that I think the evidence suggests that natural can work if designed appropriately and maintained appropriately. Certainly, there is a risk that high intensity use, if it's over and above what, you know, that starts to cause damage that's not repairable, that's when we get in trouble. That's really something that we, it's an unknown right now and you, I don't think you can say either way based on what we know that that's going to happen.
Stephanie's been very quiet, so I don't know if she wants to try it out.
She, she is eager to get it out.
Yeah.
She's desperate to get it out.
I think it's, we're, yes, we're, action is not expected tonight. And I think there, honestly, you, you've mentioned you've gone back and forth. I've gone back and forth just tonight even. But I think really what's going to get me to my final resting place on this, I think, is some of the prices, some of the costs, if, if we're seeing those at our, at our next meeting, that's, that's probably what, you know, because yes, we can continue to talk about this all night and goodness knows I have enough thoughts on it to keep talking all night. But those numbers in comparison of the different options or what the maintenance is going to be is probably what's going to get me to my final vote, or not, not really a vote, but a straw poll.
Clear direction from the board, that's really what DLA and engineering, everyone will be wanting from the board.
Did we want to give what Stephanie a word at all here?
Okay, Stephanie, any, any thoughts?
Do I have any specific questions as it relates to this? I appreciate individuals and members of the board and Martha going out and visiting some different sites just to learn more about the real day-to-day kind of usability of fields that have the natural. So I just appreciated hearing more about that comparison. Similarly, I can't say that I'm quite, that I've quite made up my mind yet. I used to keep kind of going back and forth on it. So I, I'll be interested to see also what, just from the March 22nd meeting coming up, that I'd like to listen into afterwards, also to complete my, my thoughts.
All right. Linda, anything?
I don't have any questions or anything to ask, no. I echo the same sentiment. I, I can, I can argue both sides, so I, you know, I think that's kind of the common theme.
All right, so we've talked about it for an hour and we've, well, we're hopefully getting somewhere. We're getting somewhere next meet, next time. We'll have to get somewhere next time. Let's see, so are, are we ready to move on? Is everyone okay if we move on? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
So next item on our, our agenda is the budget calendar. And I'm wondering in deference to Stephanie, if we might switch places with the press, Press Plus.
I would, I would ask if the budget calendars, we, we talked about it at the last meeting. It's just something we have to, it's just a vote.
Yeah, okay, so if we think, yeah, go ahead.
It's fine, yeah, I don't think there, I mean, there's a ton of discussion on it, on the budget calendar.
Okay. All right, then let me bring it back up. All right, well, then we'll move on to the budget calendar. Is there a motion that the Board of Education adopt the proposed budget calendar as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Synthetic or natural?
What's the drainage on the budget?
In favor. What's the drainage?
Is everybody okay to, are we ready to vote on this?
Yes.
All right, Kathy, can you call the roll?
Okay, Mr. Mayorhead?
Aye.
Ms. Gunn?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Mr. Barsati?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, which then that brings us to the Press Plus 110 update memo, section, second reading for sections six and seven. Is there a motion that the Board of Education approve the second reading and approval of IASB Press Policies 110, section six and seven as presented?
So moved.
Any discussion?
I guess, I, oh.
Oh, go ahead, Dan.
No, go ahead, Stephanie, go ahead, Stephanie.
I was just gonna, yeah, just kind of sum up from our Committee of the Whole discussion that this closes out Press 110, which I believe is due March 30th or sometime at the end of this month. So these are specifically section six and seven. I know after the initial read, there were not many or perhaps any lingering questions with one exception. So I just wanted to point that out in the agenda this evening. So by way of reminder, Policy 630, which is a D96 revision, doesn't fall under the Press Updates. That addressed the full day kindergarten language that we had not updated in conjunction with full day kindergarten, but later cut. And in terms of the Press Plus, like updates and policies, you might recall 6260, which is the complaints about the curriculum instruction, material and programs, which was language that was drafted for us by the attorneys, by forensic. We did go back and have some additional conversations with, with them in regards to expanding some of the language in terms of how the complaints are received. So I know the board felt strongly about kind of a centralized process of the utilization of the curriculum objection form. So it would be through submission of that or likely emailing that objection form directly to perhaps the principal. So you'll see in, in the board book, there's an attached updated 6260 that includes revisions there. The other issue that was brought up in, was in regards to language about whom some of the, like, objections should be raised to and it specified teachers only. So then again, in consultation with the attorneys and the committee, we are proposing expanding that language so that it's not just teachers, but it could also include, again, the building principals or district administrators. Again, I know people don't necessarily directly read the policies all the time for instruction and likely their initial instinct is just to send off an email to a teacher if, if they have an issue. But we felt it prudent to ensure that the policy reflected the, the correct process. I don't know, Martha, if you had anything else to add and/or David, what, if you were, your question.
Yeah, no, you said what I was going to say about the teacher, so.
Yeah, thank you for sharing that one.
Yeah, if the board feels about that, if, if, you know, that's not something that, that was part of the first reading, so not to spring it on people, but if there's any objections or, or thoughts on expanding it to not just limit it to teachers via the policy.
I think it makes sense. I think you're kind of getting ahead of people's natural behavior.
Right.
To not be so rigid and like put people through it just for procedure sake and just trying to be more open about it. So it, it makes sense to me how you laid it out, why we did it.
Martha, sorry, I think I cut you off.
No, I was just going to say thank you. I think you represented it very well and the reasons for the changes, I appreciate it.
I didn't have anything further to bring up prior to putting it to a vote. I'm not sure if anybody else had additional thoughts after the first read.
Nope.
Nope.
No, not for me, definitely.
Thank you.
All right, well, if there is no further discussion, are we ready to vote?
Yep.
Yes.
Yep.
You Sherland?
Yep.
This is all just one big block, right? We're not going line by line.
For six and seven, correct, yes. It's for section six and seven.
Yes, exactly.
We can go on by one.
Wait, no, sorry, I was like, here, these are, of course, you're from six and seven.
Sorry, Stephanie.
I know Joel White's having the philosophical conversations about these topics.
I'm hurt, kind of, but I was, we were, we were, we were needling Linda a bit, hoping for individual votes, but I think she's opposed to that in honor of her chartermness, well. The floor is yours, Stephanie.
So, so I, I wonder though, if we're, if we are passing this, this section, passing this section gets us before a March 30th deadline, that does make me wonder, are we like one of the few school systems to actually be in compliance on this? Because I, I don't know, just, or maybe we're just discussing a lot more than others. Because it seems like a lot to get through just before March 30th.
Well, we've had it for a few months.
We've had, yes, that's true.
Yeah, this one came out in, what was it, like Nov- is, does November sound right or is that wrong? I don't have my, oh, here it is.
We had a webinar in December, beginning of December, so, yeah.
So yeah, most of. Wow, okay, doesn't feel like it went back that far.
Well, since it's issue 110 was October 2022, so.
Yeah, so we're good.
We're good.
Yeah, I guess so, apparently we're behind.
Yeah.
The reasoning was opposite.
Apparently it was, oh, well. All right, well, any further discussion? All right, Kathy, can you call the roll?
Ms. Gunn?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Mr. Barsati?
Aye.
Mr. Mayorhead?
Aye.
Mr. Gunn, or Hunt, excuse me.
Hi.
Motion passes.
People have called me worse.
Did you say Mr. Gunn? So we, we talked about it, you know, a joint, a joint slate of husband and wife candidates.
My, 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 my wife might have a, I didn't say that. All right, so it brings us to the next section of new business. There's nothing under new business, which will bring us back around to public comment. No, okay. Then it takes us to, well, let's see, and I should note before we go to future meeting dates, I believe we're going to enter into closed session, but not for action afterwards. So we will note, future meeting dates, April 5th, 2023, Committee of the Whole, 7:00 PM in the gym at Blight Park School. April 19th, 2023, regular business meeting, 7:00 PM in the Hauser Learning Resource Center. Board will enter into closed session at 6:15 PM if necessary and return to open session at 7:00 PM. May 3rd, 2023, Committee of the Whole meeting, 7:00 PM in the multipurpose room at Central. May 17th, 2023, regular business meeting, biannual reorganization meeting at 7:00 PM in the Hauser Learning Resource Center. Board will enter into closed session if necessary at 6:15 PM and, and return to open session at 7:00. Let's see, which brings us back to our second closed session. As I mentioned, we plan to enter into closed session for a second time this meeting to finish discussions that we started earlier and with no action following. So all that said, let me get back up to the initial resolution, which I'm a long ways away from apparently. Yes, so at this time, is there a motion that the board enter closed session to discuss the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance or dismissal of specific employees of the district or legal counsel for the district, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee or against legal counsel for the district to determine its validity?
Second.
Kathy, can you call the roll?
Okay, Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Mr. Barsati?
Aye.
Ms. Mayorhead?
Aye.
Ms. Gunn?
Sorry, if I'm unable to join, can I still vote that you all should go into closed session?
Yes.
Yeah, you, you need to.
Aye.
Yeah.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Okay.
All right, thanks, everybody. I will see everybody in a minute or two.